Listen to the rules and procedures that will follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you are acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied. It just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the building department before you go ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone that would need an adjournment? Please rise and join the board and pledge allegiance. First application is application 22-2222 of Janil Hernandez, property located in North Babylon. Name and address for the record.
Janil Hernandez, 108 Irving Avenue, North Babylon, New York, 11703.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 27, 2022, environmental control memo dated January 4, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Michael Schalise dated March 9, 2018. Tax map acting as an area map. A... this is... so you're putting a pool in, so this is a drawing of the pool by James Morrow dated October 10, 2022. And this is page two of that plan. And?
Chairman, we have five photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
I'm installing it there because of the shape of the property. That's the best way that we can fit the pool according to the planners. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
Good evening. Yeah, I see you're putting a fence around it?
Pavers. There's fence already there.
Oh, the fence is there?
Yes.
Okay, so you...
There's a PVC fence around the whole property, yes.
So is there a... is there a need for any other shrubbery?
No.
For privacy or any...
Oh, we do have privacy trees around the... it doesn't show on the map because that's an old picture.
Okay. Have you been... have you read the planning comments, the memos?
Yes.
Do you agree that the pavers and all any will be at least two feet off the...
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, two feet off the property lines. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 22-222. With the recommended condition that the pavers be a minimum of two feet off the property line?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next application is application 2224 of Jose Mejia, property located in Windance. Name and address for the record.
Dennis Oliver, 924 Newbridge Road, Belmore, New York.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do, sir.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 27, 2022. Environmental control memo dated January 4, 2023. There's a couple of items on here as far as, you know, we would make that a condition if we were to approve the application. Limit to single-family use, test boring indicates 6'8", a basement at this location could be problematic, a construction activity agreement, a survey by Doreen Tay dated April 23, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's three photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dennis Oliver, architect of record for Jose C. Mejia, property located at 27 South 19th Street in Windance. Seeking permission to construct a two-story, single-family frame residence. Because it's this... because it's the Windance corridor zone, required to have a front yard of 16 feet, we're proposing 26 feet. Primary reason for this is for the installation of the septic system. If we hold 16 feet, we don't have enough room for clearances to property lines or to the house itself. And that's basically the main reason for the variance. By holding the 26 feet, we'd also be in compliance with the rest of the neighborhood. For the most part, the houses are set back a considerable distance from the property lines. This actually would be kind of an outlier if it was so close to the... so close to the road.
So there's also comments in here about the side door. Is... what's the necessity for the side entrance?
The necessity of the side entrance is just to make it easy to get into the kitchen, for the most part. If you park on this... on the side over there, you're either walking around to the back or all the way to the front. That side door allows you easy access in through the dining room straight into the kitchen rather than having to walk all the way around the house to get there. It should be noted that that side door is on the west side. The stairs in the house run north-south, so there's no chance of portioning off part of the house or something like that where you would be able to walk in and put up walls and possibly install illegal apartments or anything like that.
So one of the things on the environmental control memo is about the test bore, and there's groundwater at 6'8", and this could be problematic for a basement. Is this designed for the basement or...?
Well, we're looking just to have space to put the mechanicals in. Because the house is so small, we don't have a garage on the plan. So if we can at least get maybe four to five feet, let's say, in order to put the boiler and the hot water heater down there so that it's not taking up space upstairs somewhere.
Okay, well, if you've got the boiler down there and you get water in there, isn't that an issue?
It could be, yeah, definitely. But there's no place else to put it, for the most part. And we'd have to redesign the house and have a separate utility room.
Okay, there's also indication here of a laundry room in the basement?
We were thinking about putting the washer dryer down there, but that's an error on my part. We had designed this house plan before I got the test bore back, and I didn't realize it was so short to water. So we're gonna have to find a place to put the washer dryer, hopefully on the second floor.
Okay, so, all right. Also, there's a picture in front of me. So, you know, they're using this as a parking lot, basically?
Yeah, I've spoken to the owner about that already. He's gonna clean up the site.
So who's all these cars belong to?
Family members.
Unregistered cars?
I believe a few of them are, yes.
So they're unregistered cars that belong to family members?
With the best of my knowledge, yes.
That's a very big issue because, yeah, there's no plates on any of these cars. These are not family cars. These are not cars that can be on the road, basically, it looks like.
Is he in the used car business?
No, construction, sir.
Are these cars gonna be for salvage, or what are these cars here for? They're not family member cars.
If you consult... if you give me a minute, I can consult with the owner.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Yeah, they do belong to other family members, but he's in the process of selling them off, so he's gonna get rid of them.
It's gated off and everything. It's, you know, it's... These are not family member cars. I'm sorry, it's just not. All right, I'm not gonna belabor that, but that needs to get cleaned up regardless.
Well, I could have him clean up the site. I can bring the board pictures of the clean lot if that...
That'd be helpful. Okay?
And what are we resolving with the basement?
Well, again, if we can do some type of maybe expanded crawl space for the most part or something, someplace at least to have the mechanical space.
Which is the depth of, you know, give us a...
If I can get... well, we're at 6'10". We have to hold two feet above that. That gives us 4'10". If we can have a foot above grade, if we can hold five feet, let's say, from slab to finished floor, bottom of the floor, rather.
That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
So that can vary. When they took it, you know, at 6'8", but it could vary three to four feet according to our environmental control specialist there. So, you know, to me, putting a boiler down there, you know, you can get flooded out real quick. I'm not sure that's gonna work. You may have to look at a better design, I would think.
I can go back to the board with a better design for that floor plan if that... if that's gonna help us get a...
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that would make sense, yep, and to get rid of the cars. And if we were to approve this application, would you agree to all the covenants and restrictions and conditions on the planning memo?
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing. We're gonna reserve decision. We're gonna keep the record open for further correspondence as far as the basement, and also that you're going to clean up the whole lot here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Next application is application 2221 of Thomas Gregg, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Larry Bucemi for select permits, PO Box 679, Mount Sinai, New York.
And for the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 27, 2022, environmental control memo dated January 4, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A plot plan by Insignia Engineering, or, oh, yeah, NGMA Engineering, PLLC, dated April 21, '22. They need to make this stuff bigger. Even my glasses, I can't see.
Yeah, check the prescription.
Survey dated... oh, it's dated September 17, 2022 by Frank Ward, tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, we have six photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
This is an application to rebuild the house that was in an instant fire. Everything that's the subject to this rebuild is within the existing footprint of the house. So we're not expanding out towards any neighbor's properties of the street or anything. It's just staying within the footprint of the house. And it is on a very busy road, if that matters.
Okay, turning hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
All right, so you're squaring off the back and then going up?
Correct.
Okay. And how long ago was this... did this occur?
The fire?
Yeah.
I believe about a year ago.
Okay.
So it's been sitting kind of looking like crap on a maiden road for quite a while.
Is it owner occupied, this home?
No.
Not.
It is not.
Is it a single-family home?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Is there a rental permit on this property?
My understanding was there was. Obviously, it's unoccupied at the moment, but there weren't cited for not having a rental permit or anything like that.
Oh, there one kitchen or two kitchens in this?
Just one. Correct.
You wanna make sure that gets done?
No, they're aware of that. My understanding from them, although I have not personally seen, is they had a permit, and it's now expired. And obviously, it's a different house, so it's gonna have to be redone anyway.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Cohen, and I live at 9 Columbus Avenue. That's the house.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to tell us?
Just to clarify a couple of things, it was not a single-family home. There was two families that were living in that home. There was one family that was living on the first floor and the basement, and then there was another family that was living on the top floor. My big concern is that if they're trying... so I live directly behind the house.
Okay.
So they're back... they're on the corner. Their backyard backs up to my side yard. So as you can see, like, in the picture there, their backyard. They said if he wants to square up the house to the 15 feet, there's a patio back there. I'm assuming that that's kind of where they want to expand the house to and go up. It's just getting very close to, like, my property line and the side of my house. And obviously, with renters most likely gonna be in there, and already a fire in the house. Thankfully, our house was not damaged, but the woman up there had 10 oxygen tanks up there, and she was smoking, and that's kind of how this fire started. It was... it was six... it was June. That's when the fire was. So obviously, it's a little concerning. I have two young kids, so it's a little concerning for me to have their second floor and not knowing who's gonna be occupying it, you know, so close, so close to my... to my house. And that would be my only... my only concern there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's a legal two-family.
I stand corrected.
Either way.
Correct.
Either way.
And just to address the concern...
Is there anybody else who would like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none, okay.
Just to address his concerns, the house will be no closer to his property line if this construction is done. And also, you know, the use of the house is controlled by, you know, the town's Public Safety Division if there's a violation of the existing permit, which apparently is for a two-family house. So it's really not the subject of this hearing.
So is the gentleman correct in that where the... is concrete patio? That's where you're gonna build up?
I believe I have a plan here.
This extension of squaring it off is gonna keep the setback from the north... the east property line 10.7... 10 feet, 7 inches?
Right, in fact...
So it's just gonna square off the back of the house?
Right, in fact...
So the deck is gonna come out of there and... Concrete deck and everything will be removed.
Right, right.
Straight back and maintain that 10'7" setback off the property line.
Right, in fact, I think it's a little bit greater setback for the second floor. I think they said...
I'm looking at the survey. I'm seeing...
Yeah. Yeah, well, it'll certainly be no less than that. Right, whatever the... do you guys have this?
Yeah.
It would be more helpful to have the larger version of it.
Yeah, they have a small version.
Yeah, and there's a plot plan here if you... that's larger.
Well, because the house is offset, it's gonna be the setback from the...
Yeah, it's weird.
From the... It will be even more. Yeah, I can see. Isn't this considered the rear yard? I'm looking at... we're looking at this survey and saying 10'7".
But this is existing one story, so where he's building on top of here, it's gonna be 16.
It's further back, it's 16 instead of 10'7".
I don't believe that this is getting removed.
Is it going all the way, the whole length of the house to the...
The second story is already there, most of it, only... It just squares it off.
It's going over the garage now.
Correct, like the southern end of the house. Right. Correct.
It's not going any further into the backyard?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Hence the reason planning had no objection.
Okay, we needed that, thank you.
We do have it somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, and we're gonna reserve decision. Okay, thanks for coming down. We'll take it into consideration, okay? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next application is application 2221 of Levy Balin, property located in Deer Park. Name and address for the record, please.
Lev Balin, 106 Westwood Avenue in Deer Park, New York, 11729.
And you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 27, 2022, environmental control memo dated January 4, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Survey by Jason Lettingham dated May 26, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, we have four photographs and a site plan by Mark Anthony Munster dated December 14, 2021.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure, we're looking to do construction of a... Is that better? Sorry. We're looking to do a second-story addition, and part of that is we would like to have a porch, and that porch would require reduction in the setback to 27 1/4 feet, and we would like to have a roof over that porch.
Okay, thank you. Turning the hearing over to Mr. Coretchev.
Because basically, the only variance you need is a setback for the front porch.
That's right.
There was a question about the bedrooms upstairs in a study, the purpose or need of a study. Would it turn into eventually another, a third bedroom?
So currently, due... because of the COVID, my wife, she is fully remote, so she's fully working from home, and I'm working from home half the time.
Okay, so, yeah.
So we need two offices, so the way that the plan...
You need an office downstairs and she's upstairs.
That makes sense.
We're good.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are... Yes. Oh, the front porch not being closed, yeah. Would you agree to that? I'm sorry.
Would you agree to the condition that the... if we approve it, that the front porch will not be further enclosed?
It's gonna have the roof and open on three sides.
Right, and it won't be further enclosed.
Correct, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, then make a motion that we approve application 2221 with the condition that the front porch not be further enclosed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next application is application 2223 of NBD Realty LLC, property located in Amityville.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record.
Fran Dufrain, 9 Blue Spur Celine, Comac, New York, 11725.
Okay, sir.
Fifteen...
That'll be your name.
Ronnie Dry.
Your first name, your name.
Oh, my name is Nelson Collado.
Okay, and do you... and what's the address?
My address?
Seventy.
Seventy West Fucci Avenue, Copay, New York.
And you both affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
And people, you got... you're here for to comment on the application?
You're here for this application or you just moved both?
They have the same address. Oh, they sent us a, a letter in mail.
Okay.
We have to do, address the board, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
We're here tonight seeking permission to construct a single-family, two-story residence at what will be 15 Ronic Drive in Amityville. There was a house on the property prior to Mr. Colado's purchasing the property. He purchased it one year ago. He'd like to construct a, a single-family home. The property is unique in its situation that it's only 67 feet deep because there's a unusual situation with a 30 by 230-foot piece of property behind three pieces of property in a row that make this property less in-depth than average.
Who owns that property back there?
It's a cemetery.
Cemetery.
It's, it's vacant, there's no markers on it, there's nothing there that makes any sense. I walked it yesterday. It's just owned by a cemetery.
So it's fenced off?
Hold on.
The fence is dilapidated, it does, it does go around. There's no fence between the, let's say, the, the, the south end of this property and that.
Okay.
Parcel, but it, it's, it's there. It's, there's some dilapidated fences around it that are not.
Okay, give me, give me a second because I need to read this stuff into record. I was advised I.
Oh, sorry, I jumped in.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 29th, 2022. By a mental, no, what is this? Approval of zoning board approval, the application 07042. There was an approval, but there was also an approval addendum, which tells us why it was approved back then. Department of Environmental Control memo dated January 4th, 2023. There's a number of items on here, same as before, limits to single-family, preserve natural vegetation, and construction activity agreement. Survey by Jason Lettingham dated May 3rd, 2022. Tax map acting as an area map and.
Mr. Chairman, there's one photograph.
Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so the, the house will have all of the bedrooms on the second floor. The first floor will be all living space with an, either again, a study or a bedroom because people are working from home. The house is for his brother, he's constructing it for his family. The basement will remain as a utility basement with no exterior entrance. It'll, you'll only be able to access it from inside of the house. It will not be, you know, converted to anything in the future, it's just gonna be for a utility space. Sorry, because of the depth of the property, again, we don't meet the setbacks because you just can't with a, with 60, you know, 7-foot-deep property and a 25-foot-deep house. So the rear yard we're requesting is 20 and the front yard is 20. It's 15 feet to a second-floor roof overhang, but 20 feet to the house and 22 feet to the garage.
Okay, turn the hearing over to Mr. Perotti.
How you doing, how's everything going?
Hi.
Um, so you answered one of my questions about the basement, so I heard what you're gonna be, you're planning on doing. Is this gonna be a single-family home?
It is.
Okay, also, there's a concrete encroaching property line.
It'll be removed.
It'll be removed?
Yeah, that's just from the prior house. The house was torn down prior to his purchase of the property, so he bought it as it exists right now. So once it's improved, it's gonna, that's gonna be removed.
So do you agree?
It looks like it was an old back patio or something.
Okay, so do you agree though, if you do put any concrete or pavers anywhere, that is, you have a two, two-feet setback?
You're gonna stay two feet from the back if you put a patio, yes.
From the rear or the side property?
We're not gonna make it patio.
Yeah.
Yeah, he agrees.
Um, also, would you consider to preserve some of the natural vegetation?
Yeah, I mean, there, it's pretty flat and there's no trees on it right now, really, so.
You know, I drove by today, there's not a lot.
Right, there's nothing there, so.
Um, I have no further questions. Also, do they approve to the, the standards, covenants and restrictions?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application?
We have the same application number, I don't know what this is about.
Okay, name and address for the record. Name and address for the record, please.
15 Remson Street.
Okay, and what's your name?
Rebel.
Okay, and you guys have the same address?
Well, they sent us, I think there was a mistake.
They have 15 Ronic Drive. That's, that's not. Okay, so this has nothing to do with us.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Capers, 14 Jefferson Street, Copay, New York.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
Oh, I just had, just had a question, that's all, because my neighbors were concerned that the property, well, one of them thought, because it clearly says here that it's a one-family dwelling with attached garage, right?
Yes.
So I guess they were concerned that the, because it says here that there would be diminished front yard and diminished rear yard, they thought the whole thing was gonna be demolished and the, the street opened up.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
So that's not the case, right? It's just the house.
They're putting a new house, they're putting a house there, that's all, yeah.
Okay, facing over to 15 Ronic, because we're on the other end, but technically on the same block, but in a different town in Copay, which, of course, that happens in, in Long Island. Yeah, that's the only concern I had, they, they thought the street was gonna be opened up where you can come through and it's not a dead end anymore.
No, that's not, it's just, it's, they're just rebuilding a house there, or putting a new house there.
Yeah, from where the old one was. Okay, no problem, that was the only concern.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none? Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay.
It, it's unique because the dead end does back up to the, back of his property, so.
So they thought they were gonna, yeah, okay. Alright, it makes, I guess it makes sense to some people.
Because I drove around yesterday as well, and you, you can walk right through right now to the, to the back street behind, so.
Okay, makes sense. Makes sense why it's a back, that, that end. Question, it's a good question, so, but they're gonna build a house there, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 22-223 with the subject to standard covenants and restrictions, and also for the cement or any pavers to be two feet setback from the property line.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Next application is application 22-208 of Factory Direct Enterprises LLC, Ashley Furniture, property in Farmingdale.
Good evening, my name is James Mossiri, 1592482 Street, Howard Beach, New York, representing Factory Direct Enterprises, 1821 Board Hollow Road.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated December 29th, 2022, environmental control memo dated January 4th, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey, plot plan? By Velkus and Panetta dated April 4th, 2019.
That was the original.
I, it took me a while to find it, don't worry. Tax map acting as an area map and.
Chairman, we have four photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Uh, we're, we're seeking to renew the current application that was approved in case number 16, uh, I'm sorry, 19-168 for an existing ground sign that is 55 square feet and with a height of 22 foot. It says Ashley, uh, I'm sorry, Outlet, Ashley Home Store, it's actually backwards, it says Ashley Outlet Home Store.
Okay.
So just for renewal.
Just a renewal, nothing's changed?
Nothing at all.
Everything's still in good shape?
The lights have been changed, that's about it.
Yeah.
As of maintenance.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none, I'll make a motion to approve application 22-208 for a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good night.
You too. Quick enough for you? Next application is application 22-226 of JG JJJ LLC, property located in East Farmingdale.
Good evening, for the record, Philip Butler of Fair Fritz PC, 100 Motor Parkway in Hopgog, New York.
Okay. For the record, I have a planning division memo dated December 29th, 2022, environmental control memo dated January 4th, 2023. All department concerns and comments have been addressed at this time. Suffolk County Planning Memo dated December 22nd, 2022. Decision of local determination, take no position for or against. I have, I guess, what, this is a survey? I guess it's a survey. Survey Control Point Associates dated February 7th, 2018. This is a tax map acting as an area map, second tax map. Land development plans by Bowler Engineering, last dated October 24th, 2022. And there are a number of pages that are part of that plan, which also includes a landscape plan and so on, so. And anything else?
And seven photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I actually have some additional materials to hand up for the record, some of which will be duplicative of what you have, but I will be making reference to them.
Oh, this is me, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, as stated, my name is Philip Butler, I'm the land use attorney for the applicant. I am joined by TJ Wilkinson of Bowler Engineering, the consulting engineering firm on the project. I've just given you our, our hearing booklet, particular note, our exhibits four, which is the site plan, five, which is the landscape plan, and seven, which are the proposed building elevations. The property, referring to exhibit six, which is the survey, is 2.94 acres. It is located on the west side of Wellwood Avenue in Farmingdale, zoned GA industrial. It's improved with an existing two-story frame building, which is Helen's Flowers, The Florist, which will be vacating the site if it hasn't ready. The remainder is a vacant lot, except for outdoor parking areas and an encroaching outdoor storage area located to the southwest. The industrial district in which the property is located continues to a significant distance, several properties to the north, the south, and the west. The Long Island National Cemetery is located directly across Wellwood Avenue to the east. The nearest residential uses are more than a half mile away and are located to the northwest in the town of Huntington. Referring to exhibit four, which is the site plan, the project is a proposed three-story self-storage facility with a roughly 52,000 square foot footprint. It contains a total of 155,000 square feet of gross floor area, spread 50,000 square feet per floor. It includes 55 striped, striped parking stalls, a dumpster enclosure, new sidewalks, sight lighting. Referring to what is exhibit five, which is the landscape plan, you'll see that the proposal calls for a very robust landscaping along Wellwood Avenue, which includes 16-street trees with a contiguous row of evergreen and deciduous shrubs behind them. There will be additional landscaping on the south side of the property, around the dumpster enclosure, and elsewhere as noted on the plan. Referring to exhibit seven, which is the proposed color elevations, you'll see that the building would consist of three stories, having a total height of 34 feet, with a partial parapet on the east elevation and wrapping around the northeast and southeast corners. That parapet will be 35 and a half feet above grade. Neutral color tones have been selected to blend in with the surroundings. Little bit of history, the project was previously before the planning board for a site plan approval and a special permit. On November 28th, 2022, the planning board adopted resolutions 122 and 123, adopting a negative declaration of environmental significance pursuant to SECRA and granting the application for site plan and special permit with conditions. The applicant has no objection to these conditions, and a declaration has been drafted and will be submitted to the town for review following this board's decision. Finally, I'm in receipt of the planning division memo dated as of December 29th, stating that it has no objection to this application provided the applicant demonstrates that the proposed parking will be adequate for the project. Turning to the variances themselves, I'll start with the parking. As noted, the proposal calls for 55 stalls, whereas 78 stalls are required by code, this equates to a relaxation of approximately 29.5%. As this board, I'm sure, is well aware, parking variances are very common, especially for projects where the parking requirement based on ratio exceeds the demand, and self-storage uses are famously low generators of parking. If you look to exhibit eight in your packet, we've submitted a parking study from Atlantic Traffic and Engineering. The study uses ITE data, as well as real world, uh, real-world data taken from three existing self-storage facilities located in North Babylon, Hopgog, and East Northport. The study concludes that the peak parking demand for this facility would be 16 stalls, which would lead to a reserve of 39 stalls. So even if we were to double that demand, or even triple it, to 48 stalls at peak, there would still be more than enough to accommodate the projected parking for this facility. With regard to substantiality, the variance would arguably be substantial considering it is approximately one-third of the required parking. However, based on the study that's shown, we do not believe the impact of this variance would be substantial since there should still be more than adequate, significantly more than adequate parking for this facility. The variance requested is the smallest, that the applicant can still maintain the benefit that it's seeking, and in order to maintain the building scale, adequate drive aisles, and loading zones for fire safety. The hardship is of course self-created, as this is a brand-new construction. However, as this board knows, that factor is not self-determinative, and in the absence of an adverse impact from the project, we would ask that it not be counted against us. Moving to the variance for these stories, the project again calls for three stories, whereas the code would allow for two. However, by code, the applicant would still be entitled to two stories and a basement, which would be three sto, well, three floors, excuse me. However, basement units are not preferred for storage uses due to lower desirability by tenants and humidity and climate control issues that inevitably make these units less desirable and therefore less, lower performing. Therefore, the applicant decided to pursue a third story and engaged the planning department in discussion about that option. The applicant, before by involvement in this project, has worked for several months with the planning division commissioner and staff to develop a proposal that will mitigate any potential impact from adding the third story to the building. Those discussions resulted in the significant landscaping that you can see in the, in the landscaping plan, as well as architectural embellishments, which include varied colors and materials and breaks in the building facade, as well as the decorative parapet that was added, all of which will eliminate or mitigate the visual impact on Wellwood Avenue. And again, as noted in the planning department's memo from December 29th, it has no objection to the application as proposed. We don't believe there will be a significant impact on the neighborhood or the environment. The property is surrounded by industrial uses, there are no residential neighbors for more than half a mile. The building is actually below the maximum 35 feet permitted in the GA industrial zoning, so if conceivably this project, you know, in the future became something else, the subsequent use of the property would not be inheriting a zoning non-compliant building because the height, again, complies with the base zoning requirement. The project will improve the streetscape along Wellwood Avenue with a low-intensity use that should generate significantly more tax revenue than the current use of the site. And frankly, any other industrial use of the property would generate more parking and generate more traffic as well. The hardship, again, is self-created, but we ask that not be counted against us. In terms of precedent, we did foil the files for several existing self-storage facilities in the town. While they are located in different zoning districts and did not require height variances, both of these properties were before this board for other variances, and they are three stories tall. One is Casada, which is located at 436 Sunrise Highway in West Babylon. That was your case number 01208, approved in May of 2020, uh, 2002. And more recently, Simply Self-Storage, which is at 1070 Route 109 in Lindenhurst, that was case number 17215, approved in October of 2017. For all these reasons, we respectfully request that the application be presented as, uh, be approved as presented to the board, and we're available to respond to any questions.
Is the height is to the top of the parapet wall, basically? So. Is the height is to the top of the parapet wall, basically? So really, the height of the building is not...
So the height of the building is to the roof, top, to the roof is thirty-four feet, but the parapet that's on one side of the building and wraps around the two corners that face Wellwood, that goes up to thirty-five and a half feet, which is why the variance is thirty-five and a half feet. And it doesn't even, if you look at the elevations, the parapet isn't even continuous. It's broken up, so it's not even a continuous facade.
Okay, I think you proved your case with the parking. And like you said, these are not large, you know, people coming and going. So what's the, what's like Saturdays or something like that? Is that like the top day, or?
I could look in the study, but I'll actually turn it over to TJ, because I'm sure he can...
You don't have to go crazy, but you know, is, that would normally be? Just needs your name and address, that's all.
TJ Wilkinson, Bowler Engineering, two-seventy-five Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York. Yes, Saturday is typically the peak, both per ITE and also per what we observed in this report that was generated. We went out on Saturday.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-two, two-twenty-six. All in favor? Look, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next application is application twenty-two, two-hundred of Mary Ann Senkus, property located in West Babylon.
Good evening, gentlemen, and ladies.
Name and address for the record, please.
Larry Bennett, eleven Hotstone Drive, Mechanicville, New York.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, for the record, my planning memo dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, environmental control memo dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Okay, we have a memo from the Plans Examiner dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three that has deletions and additions to the variances.
Mr. Chairman, this is five photographs.
Okay. All right. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Well, I'm representing the owners on this application on six-six-seven Pecan Avenue, North Babylon, New York. And what we're looking to do is ask the board for special permission to diminish the front yard on Bishop Road, which would be the northwest corner from thirty feet to fourteen-point-five feet. And we're asking for special permission to diminish the front line on Bishop Road from forty feet to twenty-six feet in order to legalize a pergola. And then I have comments from the planning department that I'd like to address. Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so on, let's see, number one, number two, number one, there's obviously no complaints, so we're good there. Number two, the applicant is proposing a fifteen-by-twenty-two two-story addition on the east side of the dwelling. And the level would contain bedrooms and three-piece beds. The dwelling would contain a total of five bedrooms. The proposed addition lends itself to an illegal apartment. Planning staff would ask, the applicant intends to apply for a accessory apartment. Well, the application, yes, they definitely, it would be her daughter, their daughter, that would be, if they do this, would move into the apartment with a husband, and they have four children. So that would be strictly for family, you know, for the accessory apartment. The second one, third comment was that the request relief is substantial, as approximate half of what is required. So I'd like to give the board a support letter from the abutting owners, and a couple of photographs of the house that is directly on the northwest cor, northeast corner. The house on the northeast corner has a similar type extension where it comes out to the Bishop Road, and it was approved back in nineteen-seventy-four. Basically, application number from the board was written down here, seven-zero-nine-six in nineteen-seventy-four. I couldn't obtain any records of that particular information. There was nothing with the actual approval letter, but that was the application that was done back in seventy-four for that addition.
You don't know if we gave approval from this board for that?
No, not this board. This was in nineteen-seventy-four. They did an extension, they did a two-car garage extension with a second story above in nineteen-seventy-four. As far as the pergola is concerned, if that was to come down for any reason, it would be located in a proper location according to the code, or just disappear completely. I also have a a medical note for the client that I'd like to submit to the board. If I could find it. Excuse me. Okay. There's a a medical condition for the husband that the family is kind of concerned about. So looking into the very near future, they would like to do this two-story extension, one to accommodate him being on the lower level of the house because of health reasons, which you have in your file there, which you have, and also to accommodate the, if the daughter moves in with a husband and four kids, they need an extra bedroom. So they were going to put a master bedroom and a master bedroom as the two-story addition. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
All right, so the last part kind of confused me. So it's going to be a master bedroom?
The two-story, the two-story addition is going to be a bedroom for the husband and wife on the first floor, a master bedroom. So they have a bathroom and a full bedroom on the first floor, because there's only one small bedroom downstairs.
Okay.
If you have the plans. And on the second floor, there's three bedrooms all the way on the west side of the house. So the husband, the daughter and husband, if contemplating that they're going to do this, if all this works out for them, that they'll have a master bedroom right above the other one.
Okay, so...
So that's the two-story addition.
Got it. So there, the accessory apartment would be the second floor, their entrance would be the deck?
No, the entrance will be in the house.
Through the front door?
Yes. It's not going to be like, I mean, they'll comply with all the requirements of the accessory apartment.
Okay.
Committee, board. But, you know, it's definitely going to be family, if it's going to be at all. It won't be anybody else.
Okay.
You know, that's for sure.
Is that still a permit needed?
Second stories, the stairs to the second-story deck have always been there since the deck was built. So...
Okay.
Okay. So they'll do internal access from the front, or, you know, it's not going to be the stairs that are going to be used to get into the apartment.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's for sure. Definitely not.
Perfect. And you already agreed that if the pergola was ever to be taken down, it's rebuilt in a conforming location? What else do I have? So for application number twenty-two dash two-hundred, we are going to delete variance number one, permission to diminish front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-seven-point-eight on Pecanic Avenue. Delete variance number two, diminish front yard setback from thirty to six-point-one on Bishop Road. Add variance number two, diminish front yard setback from thirty to fourteen-point-five on Bishop Road. Delete variance number four, diminish distance to front yard, front property line from forty to seventeen on Bishop Road. Add variance number four, diminished distance to front property line from forty to twenty-six on Bishop Road. And delete variance number five, diminish distance from, to front property line from forty to thirty-two on Bishop Road for the deck. Really? According to the memo. I have no further questions. The pergola he agreed to, and, okay, so the deck not be further enclosed above or below. You agree to that?
I'm sorry?
To not further enclose the deck above or below.
Oh, no. No, we already talked about that. No.
All right.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, you're having two kitchens, right? There's going to be two kitchens.
Well, right now, they didn't apply to the two-family board. This is all, only if this works out, then obviously they have to apply for a kitchen, and apply completely with the board, the accessory apartment board.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
All right. I make a motion to approve application number twenty-two dash two-hundred as amended. What the conditions?
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They just like to torture me?
You started getting into it, I'm like, she could have just said, you know.
Right? Wow, I'm like a year and some change in here.
Wasn't really intensely.
It's fine. Wasn't that bad?
It's just correspondence.
Good evening, members of the board. Happy New Year. Pamela Green from the office of the town attorney. Here we are, all together, once again. Would the board like to revisit any of the reserved applications from this evening? Yes?
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to amend application two-two dash two-eleven.
Second. All in favor? Aye. There you go.
That one you read.
You learned well.
That's been courted up for over a year, and if it's illegal to families, it's illegal to families. He grandfathered in from nineteen-fifty-six.
That permit is as old as I am.
All right, so I make a motion to approve application twenty-two dash two-eleven as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
The second was Mr. Shepherd?
Yep.
Mr. Marco?
The other one, we're waiting on stuff. Basement, get rid of the salvage yard that he's got going on the property.
Moving on with the remainder of the agenda. Rollrite Towing is getting a nasty letter, as we'd like to move that off the agenda, and they really have not been very responsive. Moving on to page eight, it's twenty-two dash one-two-nine, Oscar Madrano. Ms. Riley has confirmed that new plans have been received. This matter will need to be re-advertised, so I would recommend removing it from the agenda, since it will have a whole new application.
Do I need to motion that, or, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to application twenty-two dash one-two-nine to remove from the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. The next application is the same situation as well, twenty-two dash one-five-six will also need to be re-advertised, so I would recommend removing it from the agenda. It's located in West Babylon. Thank you. Moving on to page ten of the agenda, twenty-two dash one-five-five, Mr. Tofoli is willing to cut back his concrete jungle, which he remembered verbatim as being shared by the concerns of the board, and he would like specifics of how much the board would like the driveway cut back. So we'll be reaching out to Mr. Shepherd and working with planning to get him some specifics for him to follow. But he was also asking for more time to do so. You're welcome. Moving on to page eleven, twenty-two dash one-nine-eight, the application of Jeremy Block. The applicant was supposed to have submitted additional evidence of similarly situated applications, which I don't believe we have had anything new on that.
Is the one that wants the garage for his boat?
Yeah.
Correct. The bottom of page eleven, the application is twenty-two dash one-nine-nine, and item number six in your correspondence is an email from Mr. Canalis saying he wants to no longer include a direct or deck or garage extension, but I don't know, I don't know how that changes his requested variances.
So the board recalls, this was the applicant who was looking to be conditioned to attach to detached garage.
Oh, yeah.
He is no longer looking to do that. He was now just like, he was bought with a permit for a one-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot shed. It is located in conforming locations. It is off the property line. So no other variances apply for that shed, and he should be performing a building area as well because the deck... because the decking was really setting him over, plus the addition. So he should be conforming that.
So he doesn't even need a variance?
So would we like to even-
Remove him, right?
Would you like to allow him to withdraw? Farmingdale?
I'll make a motion to remove application 22-199.
Second.
Thank you. Moving on to page 12, the application is 22-203, Maria Greco. Item number, items one, two, and three are supporting letters from neighbors, which would be in addition to the other supporting letters from neighbors, which I don't think is getting the point that this variance to increase the accessory structures from 45 to 89% would be considered rather severe. So late today, we were able to connect with the expediter, and the expediter has stated that they are willing to remove one shed. So we're going to need to have the calculations revisited of what that would mean.
Agreed to this at the hearing?
The expediter was made aware that this was what the board was expecting. But apparently, we're still asking all the neighbors to write letters.
So we're good, we're not getting in trouble on this one?
You know, I think the board is entirely within their purview to not allow an 89% relaxation. Okay, moving on to page-
I don't think you can do an addendum on that.
Moving on to page 13, the application is 22-212, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Riley.
So I did a little more research on this. This is the one, he did an addition, it didn't match the house, had the two back doors.
Then he removed the other back door. With a no-work order.
Yes.
Yep.
But it is known business, it is a residential dwelling, which is not performing. It's been there for many years. It's a section of the code that says that you can't alter and not conform use more than 25% of the building area. I was trying to do the calculation, I didn't have the exact numbers. It seems to me that he would be over, but I'm going to reach out and for those exact where it's putted, so we can see if that's true. Because then the board then have to make a determination on use variant to allow that.
They were trying to put an apartment in the basement? And two driveways, right? I don't think there was two, no, one driveway on the side.
It was a brick house and an addition with like-
A brick house, a stucco house, and a siding house.
Oh, yeah, I do remember.
You can't forget it. And a huge detached garage.
Thank you. So moving on to page 14, the application is 22-216, Angela Holdings. If you will please note, there was, I believe, a late addition to correspondence. I believe it's item number nine. So there's an email from a neighbor that was carried over. Perhaps it didn't make it onto the last agenda, Linda Dar. But there is, in your handouts tonight, there was another updated email from Michelle Insigne.
Didn't they agree to remove basically variance number one?
They did, but I don't believe the application was amended last week, last time.
So we could amend that now?
If you like.
I'll make a motion to amend application 22-216 to delete variance number one.
Second. Are they going to be 10 feet, though? I know they talked about maybe cutting that on, but it still need a variant. That would have to be amended.
To whatever it actually is. I don't know. Yeah, it wasn't nothing crazy, but then everyone was going crazy about it. My only issue with it is, I understand about all the flooding in the area, but why is it okay for everyone that lives there to have flooding, but no one else? If I want to build something there, why cannot I get flooding too, if everyone else is getting flooded? You know? I don't have an issue with the application. I think it looks a lot, I think it would look a lot better than the lot that is currently there. It's been that way for at least, you know, 10, 20 years, so.
So we had just asked the applicant to please at least submit the bare minimum necessary to justify a use variance, which would be to show that it's a financial hardship to use the property as it's currently zoned. So if we wanted to keep the record open a bit longer to allow them to do that?
Yep.
Just the front yard setback, that would be it.
Yep. And I did see in one of the emails, they were writing about how they're knocking down the house, and the mother and son, or grandson, are going to be moving into a one-bedroom. That doesn't make sense to me either. How could, you know, grandma and son, were they going to share the bed together?
I thought there was a two-bedroom.
No, they're all one-bedrooms. Yeah. So maybe they could clarify that for us a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This takes us to the last page of the agenda, which is your correspondence. So items one through three were letters in support regarding CBA 22-203. Item number four was an email. If you would please just take a moment to look at that. It's an email regarding an application that was previously approved by the board, and the correspondence has the prior approval. So the board in September approved application 22-135 of safe light fulfillment, which was requesting permission to do auto glass repair. According to their correspondence, they are stating that the Department of Motor Vehicles would like their permit or approval, I suppose, to read auto repair. So, but I would like to make sure that what they asked for, what they're asking the board to do is not beyond the scope of what they originally applied for. And I defer to Mr. Chris Kurecchi, if you have anything to add to the, to clarify that.
Well, I know that Department of Motor Vehicle only has, they don't segregate auto repairs for glass or transmissions or engines or anything like that. So the only clarification, classification they have is auto repair. But we could make, we could put a condition here that's only to be used for auto glass service or auto glass repair. But it's got to be zoned for auto repair.
So they need that to-
They need that to get the registered repair shop license for motor vehicle.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it's a big issue. I mean, we don't really even need the condition. I mean, it's safe light, they're going to do glass, that's all they're going to do.
Understood, it just, when their variance, which was requested and advertised, was a special exception permit for auto glass repair and installation, that's what they specifically asked for. So they didn't ask for auto repair, unless the two are interchangeable.
In essence, they are interchangeable. I have an auto repair, I know of an auto repair business that does auto glass also, that does mechanic work, so it's not something that's restricted in any way.
Okay.
Or just conditional to that repair.
Ms. Riley?
Auto repairs is a general Department of Motor Vehicle term. So that's the only one they want, so.
Anything to add?
I think that I would agree that Mr. Kurecchi would say that if needed to auto repair, in parentheses, or if you're specializing in, or with a condition for auto glass
So would the-
repair and installation, so it's not changing what you originally approved.
Right, and what they originally requested.
Okay, so would the board like to recall the application and amend the decision?
I guess we could do that. Chairman, I make a motion to recall the application 22-135.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend application 22-135 from auto glass service to auto repair with the condition that they're servicing glass and window repair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
For a period of three years?
Safe light?
Three years, yeah, I do.
For a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, moving on to page two. Item number five was the memo from Kevin Bertolini, the Plans Examiner. The board's already reviewed that. The board's already reviewed number six, the email regarding Marvin Canalis. Moving on to number seven, to the attention of Mr. Delavecchia, we have an email regarding application 22-184 regarding the infamous side door. So this would be another example where if the board is satisfied with the explanation, they would recall the application to remove the language pertaining to the no-side door condition.
So I make a motion for variance number 22-184 to remove the language about the no-side door, and then approve application 22-184.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Finally, for your reading pleasure, there is a notice from the town of Huntington with several copies of resolutions that they anticipate that they have approved at their December 13 meeting. And I don't believe we need to still carry on the application. We don't, we no longer need to carry over the email from Peter Toth. I don't believe we need to carry over the email anymore from Linda Dar, as the board just reviewed it, which leads us to, excuse me, accepting the minutes of December 8, which were on for review at your last meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of December 8, 2022.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?